January the 11th, we'd like to welcome Ms. Adrian Carrico sitting in for someone that's out of town, so y'all be nice to her now. All right, first item on the agenda is, or the second item is juvenile curfew update. J D., Master Chief, will give us a story, please.
Yes, sir. And I know that there's been some questions and some concerns brought forth about the, about the ordinance and we understand as a department, we understand the appeal of the ordinance and, and on the surface, I think that, I get it from the aspect of removing juveniles or making sure juveniles are in their home, that it, it takes away the opportunity for them to commit crimes or be big, I'm sorry. Close. It, is that good, sir?
It's a little better.
Little better? All right, I apologize. Normally everybody says I talk loud enough, but, but the, removing, removing the opportunity, I, I get the, get the appeal to that, but the issue is quite a bit more complicated than that. We pulled some of the statistics, some of our statistics between 2019 and 2021. We've issued a total of 46 curfew violations in that time period. Of those 46, 42 of them were dismissed by the court system. One received a $25 fine and three received a $50 fine. The reality is, is that curfew violations are viewed by the court system as a, as a minor offense and, and they're often dismissed. And there's a lot of defenses that's built in there as well that, that we've discussed before. And truthfully, a lot of times juveniles, they get charged, charged with significantly worse offenses or released directly back to their parents. So that takes away a lot of the teeth of the curfew ordinance. There's also some other factors that, that apply there that particularly when it comes to the gun crime, some of the, some of the gun crime that we've had, looking at our statistics between 2019 and 2021, only two involving juveniles have occurred during the curfew hours that, that we have. So that's, that's an incredibly small number compared to, compared to what happens. Another thing that, that we would like to, to, to discuss or like, like to, for, for y'all to think about is how the curfew ordinance could disproportionately affect certain parts of our community, particularly those that, you know, struggle economically. And, and there's also a factor to consider of how juveniles in neighborhoods in the county could be held to a different standard than those juveniles that are, that are within the city limits. I think that, I know one of the struggles that I've had over the years during my career with this is, you know, it's hard when you, when you're looking at a single mother that's working a couple of part-time jobs or working shift work, it's, it's hard to cut that citation on something, on something like that. And I think that that's, that's some things that we need to, need to consider. And a couple of other things that I, I would like to mention as well is that the majority of juvenile crimes, the reality is, is that they don't occur during the curfew hours. Just like I mentioned initially, you know, it's, crime occurs because of opportunity and during normal hours when there's more kids around, that's when more juvenile crime, juvenile crime occurs. There's underlying factors that's beyond the capability of law enforcement to handle that, to address that type of stuff, but I think it is something key to consider. And finally, I would like to also say that, you know, the curfew ordinance does serve to put our officers in a position to have negative encounters with our, with our young people. And that's a, that's a wedge that we've worked hard over the years to, to overcome. And, you know, we, we will always do what's necessary and we're going to do our job and do the best that we can, but we, we do have to keep that in consideration. So with all that said, we don't want to minimize the, the considerations for the, for the safety of our kids. We do know that the scientific, there are scientific studies out there nationwide about the effectiveness of, of curfew ordinances. And I think that, that, that should apply here, but I also think that we should do a, a community survey to, to see what the community, how the community feels about the ordinance and also get input from stakeholders and criminal justice practitioners about the effects of the ordinance and the impact that it'll have on our citizens. And that's all I have, sir.
So a lot of it gets down to dinner table, rural, doesn't it? You know, what happens at the supper table and a single parent's just tough. I mean, you can't arrest them, that isn't going to do you any good because then the child didn't have a place to go.
Yes, sir.
So I admire your efforts in trying to do this as humanely as possible and I think we could possibly use a Chamber of Commerce as a, an avenue of creating a survey, you know, and then blend in possibly the Neighborhood Alliancees if, if that works well.
Yes, sir.
To try and get this out, if you can maybe present some, some of the questions that might be helpful to create this survey, we'll see if we can move that forward. I think it's a good idea.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Just one.
Just one. That's all I need. Thank you, Mayor. And Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
J D., quick question. So if I get it, I, I, I'm out late at night and I get this curfew violation, what's the penalties? What, what were they typically looking at?
Well, the, the penalties, what, what is happening so far is the vast majority of them get dismissed. Now you can go, if they file a, the parents file a beyond control order, they're automatically dismissed from, from what I understand. And that's, I think that's written into the, written into the ordinance. And, you know, you have with that, I mean, the criminal justice system is overwhelmed right now with a lot of things. So I, I understand it from that aspect. The court-designated workers' office is, they're short, social workers, short on social workers. There's a lot of stuff that's, that contributes to this, so I'm, I don't want to put all the blame on that. But what does happen is it, the police officer, in the end, the police officers are the only bad guys. When we, when we write the, write the citation, it ends up getting dismissed, it's, it's just us. And like I say, we'll, we'll do our job and we'll do what we have to do to protect this community, but we also do have to think about the relationship with our community and the impact that we have on these young people that we come into contact with, sir.
Mr. Pfeiffer, could we look at that ordinance and see if there's anything we can do to help our police officers? I mean, we probably looked at it a dozen times, but would you mind taking a peek at it? Because when you reference that ordinance, you know, maybe there is something in there that might be able to be.
I'll do that.
Okay? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Just one quick question, may I?
One quick one? All right, go ahead.
Yep. J D., when you say that the court system dismiss, is, is that like a state, a state law or is it, is it, is it?
Well, no, it's, it's not a state law. It comes down to, I mean, officers to an extent have, have discretion. There's some stuff that, that we don't, but the court system has discretion as, as well. And like I say, they're, they have, there's a lot of stuff that goes through and, and the reality is, is more serious crimes, we have to focus on more serious crimes at times and, and the court system is, has to focus on those. And so if, if a parent comes in front of, in front of the judge and the judge chooses to dismiss it, they'll, they'll take that action, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Nate. That's why we're trying to get a second juvenile justice judge here, which is one of the reasons because they are so overwhelmed. Thank you for your report, appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda, item number three. Seems like we've visited this over the last eight years once or twice. Ms. Rogers?
A few times, a few times. Let me see, Adrian. There we go. Mayor Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to give you an update with where we're at on Cravens Pool and make a staff recommendation to you today on how to move forward with that location. If you'll remember, I was here in August and we discussed the state of Cravens Pool and the condition that that pool is in. I reminded you that it's one of two pools in our park system. We operate a pool at Chautauqua Park that we call Combe's Swimming Pool on the east side of our community. We also operate Cravens Pool there on the Orangeboro Public Schools property on the west end of our community. That pool is 46 years old, so obviously we're dealing with multiple structural and mechanical issues at that location and we have been addressing issues at that pool easily for the last 10 years and they seem to be just getting worse and worse and worse. So I brought that to your attention in August and said I would look at how to move forward to this location. I felt that it was prudent before we just jump in and make repairs or make that recommendation that we truly look at all the options for that location and discuss where we're at. So if you will remember, I mentioned that we were closed in 2020 due to COVID and we also in preparation for hopefully opening in 2021 last summer, we knew we had issues and we felt certain from the appearance of some of the things that we looked at in the summer of 2020 and early 21, that that non-operation year of 2020 had really hastened the deterioration of that location. So we found out through reference and review of the public health department, they provide us with a permit to operate each summer. We went ahead and reached out to them to come in and look at the pool with us to make sure they were seeing what we thought we were seeing unfortunately, and that's that we had significant violations that we were going to have to repair before we could open. So they did that review for us. They agreed that we were in a situation where we would not be able to open without making significant repairs. So the tough thing about that is when we built that pool in 75 and where we're at in 2021 and 2022, obviously the code that the state has for operation of public swimming and bathing facilities is much different 46 years later. So to make significant repairs or make significant changes to our mechanical system, we're required to come to code, to meet that current code. And that's, that's kind of the sticking point in the matter where, with where we're at. So me and my staff did a review, what our options would be with that location. We looked at multiple options. I put the six that we considered there on the screen. Do we make repairs and add amenities at that location? Do we completely do a new rebuild there? Do we replace the pool with a splash pad? Do we build new at a new location? Do we close altogether and do nothing at that area of town? Since that pool does service the west end and we have a pool that services the east end, which is much larger, would closing and just operating from one pool be an option? Or do we close both pools and look at building a new aquatic center to serve our computer, our community for the future? So staff did review those options and in addition to reviewing those options, we wanted to give the public opportunities to tell us their thoughts and what they desired. So we did that through two different means. We hosted a public meeting, September the 22nd at Dugan Best Recreation Center. We had multiple citizens come. I did a presentation reviewing what I felt like were the options for the community and some of those pros and cons and collected input from the citizens that attended. We also, following that meeting, put out a survey that was out for about three weeks, basically asking questions relevant to the options, what you would use, what you felt your family members, your friends, your neighbors would use to determine what the voice of the community would say. So we collected and analyzed that input from the meeting and from the surveys and we also reviewed all the options that I gave you on that previous slide, the six options. We looked at initial costs for each of those options. We looked at operational budgets for each of those options and what that would look at. We also tried to do some best guesstimate on how we felt like that would impact usage and recreational amenities here in our community for our citizens and taxpayers. So after reviewing those options and looking at that public input, the staff would recommend that the city look at funding, making repairs and adding features at the current location. I think in the world that we're living in right now, especially with the situation with COVID and for the long-term future of our community, deleting a recreational amenity is not a wise thing, the wise thing to do for our citizens. I think we have proven over the last two years through COVID that the health, the mental health and the physical health of our citizens is extremely, extremely important, especially in a time when we're challenged as a community and a society. And the usage of our park system, especially our outdoor locations, has been tremendous during this time. So I cannot in good faith stand and suggest or recommend that we close an outdoor amenity at the current time, but I would recommend that we do one of the more prudent options when looking at what we can do to keep that facility open and operating for the next several years. And that would be make those repairs that are needed to get us to code. And I would also recommend putting in some additional money to improve that location, make it more enticing, make it more current for the world that we live in today and hopefully make a draw for the west end of our community that utilizes that location for the future. I think for about a $600,000 investment or even less, we can make all the repairs that are needed and we can add water play features and site amenities such as shade and seating that are going to be very important at that location. That pool being the smaller of the two pools services the middle age, the middle school age child and down. We see a lot of families with small children. We do our swim lessons for tots and toddlers at that location. So it's perfect as it has kind of a zero death entry and goes down to about four and a half feet. It's perfect for the smaller child. So that shade and that additional seating for families would be a really nice amenity to add as well as the interactive features of that location. So that would be the staff recommendation on how we move forward with Cravens and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. So one question I have, have you taken a look at Horse Fork Park and what the county did with theirs? That's a really nice facility. I'm not saying copy them, but if you haven't looked into your staff, and you probably have, but they seemed, I really like what they did there.
Yes, we did look at that and our option in the public input meeting as well as on the survey was to make a splash pad. And the consensus in both of those was there was no interest in just a straight splash, splash pad or spray park at that location, that they liked the thought of the combination of the two where you have the water features and the flat water as a service pool. But there, the consensus in both of those public input was that just a spray park alone was not of interest.
Okay. And then the other question that I've done is the tendency, extend life of location on your graphic ten seasons. So is that presuming, I want to make sure I understand, so if you're saying we do this, it would extend the life of the pool 10, basically 10 years?
Yeah, that's the staff estimate. Now, I'm always very conservative in numbers in that sense. It's going to last a lot more than 10 years. This pool lasted 46 years. If you go and you look at other pools in the state of Kentucky, most other pools in the state of Kentucky are no older than 30 to 33 years. Our public works team and the gentlemen that we have working and the ladies that we have working in our facilities team are amazing. They find a way to take duct tape and fairy dust and sprinkle it on things and make things last forever. I'm not sure how they do it, but they're great. So I would anticipate that what we put into this pool will last no less than 10 years, but I would feel confident that we could get 15 to 16 years out of that location.
Thank you for, all you and your staff do.
Thank you.
My honor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Castle?
Yes, Ms. Rogers. I, I was wondering as far as with the repairs and all, there's not, not going to be any expansion on the pool itself? It would just kind of be repairs directly to what is there?
It would be, there's potential for expansion. So we have space at that location where we can go back towards the back of that property. So we do have some space that we can enlarge the footprint of the pool. So when we, if we were able to move forward in this direction, what we would do is work to do some, probably request for proposals from contractors. I've spoken to two different companies that do renovations and repairs and additions to pools in our area of the country and sent maps and oversight layouts of that property. So I think the intent would be that we would increase the flat water square footage of the pool and we would add some spray features around the pool deck as well.
Okay. Yeah, I know you had mentioned it served a lot of small children and all and I, I'd heard a couple of complaints that it was just, the pool was too small in itself. And as far as areas of shade and such, would you be expanding the, I don't know, like patio, the concrete area around the pool also?
Yeah, we're fairly limited on our space. If we're going to expand for flat water surface area, pool surface area, we're fairly limited on the space to expand the pool, the pool deck. So what we'd like to do is just take some of that pool decking that's towards the Fifth Street Road or the Cravens Avenue front of the property and add shade structure along that area. We also have a large area that primarily services those who are eating, like our concession area, and we'd like to add some shade in that area as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Stafford?
Yes, Amanda. Sorry. Amanda, just to piggyback on what Mark said real quick, to expand it, is that in this price, the $600,000?
Yes.
And how much would that expand? Do you have any idea how many feet?
Well, I do. I think we had about 40 feet to 50 feet in length that we could play with and not go a whole lot wider in this space.
Okay. That's good. Yeah, I would, I think I would be for expand, I, I think it's a little small and I think those kids in that area, I'd like to do as much as we can. I think, I think you came up with a pretty good proposal. So I appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm the bad guy.
That's all right.
So what are the numbers of actual, you know, I know you buy one ticket for all years, for the season for both pools?
No, we, we aren't, we are not doing swim passes any longer. We haven't done that for a few years. So there's two different ways, three different ways, I guess, I'm sorry, four different ways that you can access our pool. We have a daily admission fee. We serviced, we prior to COVID serviced a lot of day camps and groups. The Salvation Army, even one of our day camps would utilize that and pay a group entrance fee, which is just reduced a little because you have multitudes of people that are coming at one time. You can also rent those pools and obviously per the rental fee, you can bring what our bather capacity is for your rental. And then we do, we do free passes at times for, if you come in and within that first hour that you're swimming, we get a rain delay or you've had a bad experience for some, some reason, then we will give out some free passes at times as well.
And arrested for COVID, for violation.
So those are the ways that you access the pool and historically speaking, keep in mind, we didn't operate in 20, the summer of 20. We didn't operate in the summer of 21. So I have, and of course, the way that our budget works, we cross two fiscal years. So July and August, May and June are kind of how our numbers work each budget year. So when you look at those budget years and you look at the number of swimmers, we went from averaging about 5,042 admittance or participants a year and that's separate from our rentals. And then we went as high as 6,800 participants a season. So that's kind of the range we're in is about 50, 50 to 6,800 with the pool and the condition that it's in. I would fully anticipate that if we improve the quality of the pool and the service we provide at that location, that our foot traffic would increase as well.
So what are your hours?
I am going to ask Jennifer Hodges, who is our recreation facility manager who operates both the pools.
Jennifer, all right.
I'm going to ask Jennifer to come answer that question because I cannot keep all those hours for each facility in my head.
The hours at, at Cravens, well, actually at both pool locations, we, we keep the same to keep it simple. But Monday through Friday, it's open noon to 4:30. Saturdays is 11:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. and Sundays is 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. And then outside of those hours, like Amanda had said, you know, we, we do a lot of private rentals outside of public swim. We offer swim lessons too, outside of public swim. And then certain groups, if they are not swimming during our public swim hours, they're swimming early in the morning time before we're open.
How does the Orangeboro Public School system fill, figure into this scenario since it's actually their property? Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, sir.
It's on their school property, but for some reason, we own the pool from some ordinance years ago.
A long time ago.
And, and I, I know I, this is, only reason I, this came up, you know, in one of my other sentences. So they made the statement to me when I called them that they couldn't do anything when, as it pertains to recreation. So is that, have we talked to them anymore recently about, you know, a 50/50 deal or since it is their property? Who pays for the, this might be, do we carry the insurance then?
We do, we do. So Mark and I met with Superintendent Constance and a couple of his team members to discuss ownership of the property and review our opinion about who the property owner was. And they did not deny or argue our stance that they were the owner of the property. They also expressed that any action that we wanted to do moving forward that'd be different from operating a pool as it stands at that location, they would want for us to review that consideration with them in advance of making, making those plans. And they did express to us at that time that they had no interest in helping to fund that because they felt that the tax base and the revenues that they generated to operate the educational system weren't there for public recreational use.
They're consistent anyway.
And so, yes, sir, we do provide the insurance. We provide insurance and we do list Orangeboro Public Schools on our insurance certificate for operation of that location.
And we pay for the lifeguards and all of that stuff?
We, we manage all the subsidy at that location, yes, sir.
Okay. So when, if you're going to do some additional stuff, I just was thinking, is this designed to keep this pool in perpetuity or could it be designed to phase it out as, as these other amenities become more likeable to the public?
Well, when I looked at the options and I considered what's provided at that location based around the public input, what's trending in our state across the nation in recreation, I looked at putting something at that location that would service the citizen for the next, hopefully 10 to 15, 20 years. I'm not sure that that answers your question because I may not have completely understood what you're asking. I apologize.
That's okay.
But I'm looking at the, the shorter term picture of a, potentially a 20-year window, but hopefully a 10 to 15-year window.
Well, I just appreciate your report.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's a lot of work. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Okay, thank you. Good job, Ms. Hodges. You're off the hot seat now. Next item on the agenda is the Orangeboro Fire Department Strategic Plan. Chief James Howard.
Hello, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, for the opportunity to present the framework for the Orangeboro Fire Department Strategic Plan for the years 2022 to 2027. The work product that I'm going to summarize for you today is a basis for an action plan to move our department forward. Fire departments generally are tasked with three major responsibilities. our department forward. Fire departments generally are tasked with three major responsibilities. First of all is to prevent bad things from happening. Next is to prepare our personnel for a state of readiness against the risks that can happen in our community. And lastly, to show up when called to put our preparation to the test when it counts for our citizens and business owners and those who visit here. This plan seeks to advance our capabilities in all three of these areas. So the objective of the strategic planning process is to develop an organizational plan for mission-driven success to emphasize continuous improvement. And the phrase continuous improvement, you'll hear a lot probably as we go through the year when I come in to talk more about our accreditation process and with our annual report from last year moving forward. And our strategic planning really is deeply seated right there in our accreditation process. And continuous improvement truly is the name of the game, recognizing that you can be really good at what you do, but you can never be good enough when it comes to public safety. So the strategic planning process involved seeking inputs that could give us basically material to work with to be able to develop a plan, to be able to respond to what the community needs. And those, those inputs came in several different forms. One of those was the City of Orangeboro Strategic Goals, which were developed by the city manager, the city administrative staff and the elected officials in the planning processes. Specifically, the strategic goals that were considered for our strategic planning process were the ones that were presented in the 2122 fiscal budget for the City of Orangeboro. Community feedback, because as Ms. Rogers stated, the, the responses of the community, being able to involve them in your process is extremely important because they're the ones that we're here to serve. So it's important to know how they feel about what we do and what services they want. The OFD Vision 2020, which was a previous strategic planning document that was actually developed by Chief Mitchell back in 2015. The internal stakeholder review, which was a SWOT analysis, and most of you I'm sure are familiar with the idea of SWOT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, just a review internally of the fire department by talking to our own people. And then ISO classification, public protection classification for the insurance industry. Some of you are familiar with that, and I'll speak just a little bit more to that as we move along here. So like I said, the first one of those inputs I mentioned was the City of Orangeboro Strategic Goals. There are several of those and not all of them fall into, into what the fire department actually does, does for the city. They're all important and we, we help to promote and enforce success of any of the strategic goals of the city, but we are focusing our efforts on specific goals that the city has. And primarily, that would be first-class public safety. Improving transparency and communication, we absolutely have a role in that. As you can go back to the, one of the first responsibilities that I mentioned in preventing the bad things from happening, one of the important things there is to be able to communicate those things out for your prevention efforts and being transparent about our operations and letting the community know what we're doing, how we do it, and what we can do for them. Strengthening and enhancing neighborhoods absolutely have a role to play in that. Our fire stations are part of our neighborhoods. Our people live in the neighborhoods. Some of our stations are more, more neighborhood stations than others, and the kids come by to get their bike tires aired up, come by to get a drink, play basketball with our firefighters. We are parts of the neighborhood and we recognize that. It's extremely important to us personally and professionally. Sustainable city government. The fire department is part of our critical infrastructure, and we're also here to protect other aspects of our critical infrastructure and the continuity of our, of our city government, the city government that exists to provide services to the community. Okay, the next input that I mentioned was the community feedback. I collected community feedback using Survey Monkey because I believe it's an excellent resource for being able to, to survey and to get input from the community. So I utilized the Survey Monkey Community Satisfaction Survey, basically soliciting responses using our Facebook page, the Departmental Orangeboro Fire Department Facebook page. So I polled the community on the importance of various services and had them rate the different things that the fire department does, including fire suppression, special operations, emergency medical treatment or prevention services, and just the gamut. And of course, fire suppression topped the list. And that's, there's a good reason for that as far as the way that people understand what the fire department does. Fire is right there in our name. It's our brand. It's what we do. And whenever you call 911, we're the ones who are coming whenever you, you have a fire event clearly. So that's our profile and we're proud of that. And it's unmistakable that that's how the community recognizes us and what they see that we do that is the most important to them. So respondents gave us a 9.4 out of 10 when asked to rate our, their overall satisfaction with our services. We understand this is a high rating and the, that, that the number, like the people that responded to the survey are friendly to the fire department to begin with because they look at our Facebook page and do this. But we're still proud of that number. And we'll, we'll work like 9.4, that's good, next year. Like we can work for 9.5, 9.6. We want people to be emphatically happy with what we do for them and the services that we provide. Suggestions for additional services, there were a lot of suggestions and some of them were more workable than others, and most of them went into public safety education. Because most people who are in this room, and most people who hear this, your parents, and you know that the important thing is you're getting those messages out there to provide a fire-safe community and to provide education and change behaviors so that your children can grow up in a community that is safer for everyone. And public education is right at the front of that, and it's by no means limited to children because we definitely, the education's out there for seniors, college students, and everyone in our community, business owners. So that's the main emphasis of the, the things that people put out there that they want us to respond to, is to provide more and more public education, and we'll be happy to do that. One of the good things that I got out of this, I had an item on there to allow people to provide their personal contact information to be able to involve them in future focus groups for the department. So as we move along with the, reaching our objectives within our strategic plan, we have contact for, contact information for groups that we can put together, whether it's virtual or in person, to, to discuss the things that we do and the things that we want to do and get that community's input. And then we'll repeat the community feedback survey every once in a while to try to make sure that we're, we're building out those groups for our focus groups and to find out how people feel about what we're doing as we try to continue along our path. Another input, as I mentioned, was the OFD Vision 2020 document, which was an internal planning document. It was the previous strategic planning process. Once again, Chief Mitchell, he started that in 14, I believe he published it in 15, and then there was an update with an internal focus group in 2018. Of course, as we know, Chief Mitchell retired at the end of 2019, and there was a transition. A lot of things transpired over the next year, including COVID. And a lot of what we did as a department really felt reactionary. And it was important that we get to this point and have a strategic plan where we're moving forward in a proactive manner instead of being reactive. Because even with COVID, that doesn't mean that all the other things that are out there aren't still going on for us to address. Many objectives from that previous plan were actually accomplished, and there, there's a long list of those. We will revisit any of the unfinished business from that plan in our new plan. The internal, internal stakeholders, these were group, the internal stakeholders are the members of the Orangeboro Fire Department. So I got their input from group meetings that were conducted throughout October of 2021. Being able to use the class, some of the classroom facilities from KC TCS on Frederica Street, they, they were just great in supplying that, that space for us to be able to do that. And we had meetings with each of our crews. Everyone had a chance to have that input, including the, the trainees who were actually in training at the time that we did this. They had their own session for strategic planning, including that process. OFD members guided the revision of our mission statement, our vision statement, and our shared values. Because you really do, like whether you're a, a city government, a fire department or a business, you got to go back and look at those things and ask yourself, why are we here? Why do we exist? Who do we serve and where are we headed? So we went through that process as well. A departmental SWOT analysis, I already mentioned the SWOT, was used to guide a targeted planning process for our strategic planning. The last input that I mentioned on that early slide was the ISO classification. The ISO is Insurance Services Office. It's actually a private business that, that has a rating system and they audit fire departments to determine your public protection rating, which helps to determine insurance rates. Not all insurance companies use the ISO rating to determine what the, what the premiums would be on insurance, but some of them do. But even if you set that aside, they do have a matrix and a standard for how fire departments and water systems and dispatch centers are set up. That's really valuable just as a standard in and of itself. So fire departments are rated from 1 to 10, and 1 is the highest on fire protection capability. The ratings are based on three different factors. I mentioned dispatch, the overall water system supply, and then the fire department itself. The fire department is about 50% of that. Dispatch system, I believe, is 10%, and the water system accounts for 40% of it. And clearly, the dispatch and water systems have to be able to build a, support the fire department first, be able to provide what we provide. OFD's long been rated an ISO 2 agency as far as, back from before I was on the fire department. It's been quite a while. The most recent audit was performed in 2018. Typically, these audits come up about every five years. So we're expecting next year to, to have another rating and we're, we're shooting for that one. As we, as I have in the last bullet there, we aspire to be an ISO 1. It's difficult to do. It takes investments and it takes staying on track to do that. And, and one of the things that we're going to do to try to achieve that is to do an internal review of the public protection classification with dispatch, OMU, and with our agency to kind of get an idea of where we are and the things that we can do to be ready for them to come in and, and do that audit of our organization. Because it's very important to us. Okay. So those are all the things that we put into this. Basically, we looked outside, we looked inside, we looked back, and, and now we need to look forward. So out of all of that, we developed seven strategic initiatives to take on with our action plan for the strategic planning for 2022 to 2027. As you can read on the slide in front of you, and you'll see there's a lot of enhancing and improving because that's, that's all about always making things better, no matter how good they are now. So first of all, enhance our community risk reduction. And second, improve our personnel development. Three, enhance operational effectiveness and efficiency of our emergency services. Fourth, improve health and safety of our responders. Fifth is to meet the current and future resource needs to meet our mission. Sixth is improve recruitment and retention. And seventh is to improve internal and external communications. So within the fire department, as, as most of you know, most or all of you, there, there are three different divisions that I'm over. You have the prevention division, which is the risk reduction, and their actions and that, those programs are going to be taken on by that first initiative. Second, we have our training division, human resource development. The, that, the actions of that division and those objectives fall under that second strategic initiative of personnel development. Third is the operations. Overwhelming majority of our folks are out there responding 24 hours a day on those 24, 48 shifts. So that's our operational effectiveness and efficiency. How quickly are they get, getting the resources there and being able to mitigate the incidents that they're going to. And the other ones all support the mission of what those first three categories are going to do. So let me move through each one of those initiatives. Because with each of these initiatives, they're broken down into objectives, and each of those objectives have, have an action, have actions that will support those objectives. And each one of those actions have someone who's responsible for carrying that out, and, and there's a timeframe attached to each one of them. You're all familiar with the idea of SMART objectives, where they have to be specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and then have a timeframe attached to them. And in the more detailed action plan, which will become available to the public in the coming days, each one of these objectives is broken down into specific actions that do have those, those SMART elements to them, to be able to provide some accountability. So that whenever I come to you next year with the, the 2022 annual report to let you know what we did this year, this is going to be a very important element because I want you to hold us accountable that we're actually doing the things that we say we're going to do. So the first initiative, once again, that's what most people think of as fire prevention, but, but community risk reduction is the term that we use in the industry for reducing risk with prevention efforts. So it's broken down into three pieces, and we have an objective for each one, to improve our public education, to improve our code enforcement, and to improve our fire investigation. And once again, within each one of those, we have those broken down into actions to help us achieve that. The personnel development are what most people think of as training. There's our recruit training that we, that we seek to improve, our continuing education, because we're constantly training. There, there's 100 hours minimum that the state wants firefighters to have. So we have to train every week in order to have the training hours that we need. And then there are standards that want you to have twice as many hours of training as that. We have EMS training, fire training. There's a lot to that. So that's why we have to have a training division to keep up that continuing ed. And we're looking for ways to improve that. Improve our special operations team training to make sure that we have folks who can go out and do the confined space training, the trench, the structural collapse, so that whenever events like last month's tornadoes happen, we can have those teams deployed out there, whether it's in, in our community or to go out there and help our neighbors. And the, the fourth objective up there, improving officer, our officer development program. One of the things from that Vision 2020, Chief Mitchell developed an officer development program. We want to take another look at that, look at the relevant standards, and make sure that we're always improving that, make sure they're always developing our officers, who are the ones out there making those critical decisions to make our community safer, but really to keep the, those who are sheltered, sheltered with them, safe in the field as well. Lastly up there is to improve the succession planning, which comes right out of the officer development planning, planning, I'm sorry, the officer development program. But we have to improve our succession planning because one of my promises to the city manager coming into this position is that, that I would work to, to work on staff to make sure the succession is there so you have solid choices to move into each vacancy that occurs at the upper levels of the fire department. And I tend to keep that promise. The third initiative was to enhance our operational effectiveness and efficiency of our emergency services delivery. So the first half of that is analyzing our current baselines of risk and our deployment. A lot of the work of this analysis is, is taking place with certain aspects of our accreditation process, as far as a deep dive into analyzing our response times and really looking at what we put out on the street versus what the standards are and what's happening in other communities. So that, that's actually already underway and there's a, we've done a, the community risk analysis that, that's being finalized at this point that's going to help with this. On the other hand, so that's looking at the baseline. So what do we do after that? The whole point of the strategic planning is to move forward. So improving deployment to meet current and future needs. And there are a lot of ways that you can do that, whether it's, like you could put your stations in different places. We can have technology, as we've been installing at our stations, that help us to make sure that we're getting notified like seconds quicker, which can be critical seconds for, for the patient or for the person who's in a burning house. So, so basically, where are we and where do we need to go? That's what this, what it's all about. The fourth one, the improving firefighter health and safety, came up a lot, especially in our internal SWOT analysis. So we need to be responsive to that. And it's something where, once again, you can never be good enough when it comes to health and safety. But once again, we want to perform a baseline inventory of our health and wellness programming because there are several existing programs, but it's not good enough to have them. You need to make sure that people know about them, they know how to use them, and there's no stigma attached to those things. For the next objective, for initiative four, establish a culture of organizational and personal accountability to prioritize health and wellness, that's a heavy lift. And it's going to involve, it's going to involve some investments. And one of the biggest investments is going to be from the folks who are actually going to benefit from them as far as getting their buy-in to, to put the time in and to be able to engage in the programs that we put forward. The fifth initiative is the current and future resource needs. So we get into the PPE, which is everything that, that we need to be able to respond to incidents, whether it's the gloves and masks for medical calls, to the bunker gear, the things that you need to crawl up into a house fire, and then on to the special equipment that's needed for special operations, and just everything that we need. Just making sure that we're providing and keeping up with the technology that's out there to make sure that we have what we need to actually go out there and do the job and do it safely. Providing the adequate tools and equipment to go out there and do those same things, and making sure that we're keeping up with, with what's out there and from other departments, trade magazines, always trying to stay on the cutting edge. Our fleet replacement program, which has been fantastic for our organization, to make sure that we're maintaining that, keeping an eye on it, and make sure that we're getting the most out of our fleet and being able to replace in a timely fashion our trucks that, that can cost half a million dollars or more. Then maintaining and improving our facilities. The city, we've already started making some, some big investments in updating some of our facilities, and there are going to be a lot of those investments that are going to be made over the next few years, and we want to make that count by, by planning very thoughtfully in what we do so that, so those facilities are good for a good long while. Improving recruitment and retention. So we want to improve on our entry level and Improving recruitment and retention, so we wanna improve on our entry level and our lateral transfer recruitment, not that we don't have a good program right now, and the personnel at the city is fantastic, but we can always be better, and we wanna work on that, ways to streamline it and make sure that it's user-friendly for the applicant, make sure that we're picking the right applicants to put out on the street as to be candidates for our job. Improving the retention of the workforce, very important. It's not enough to hire them, you gotta keep them, because we've lost several this past year, and people have different reasons that they leave, and we wanna address all those things and stay as attractive as an employer as we can. Lastly, but not least, is enhancing our internal and external communications. Communications are a killer, like for any business or any organization. If, like we've noticed just inside, like with the command staff of the fire department, like it gets to be difficult in any organization, you really have to make sure that your messaging is consistent and the people know what your expectations are. The external communications between the fire department and other city departments, and between the fire department and outside agencies and with the community, like I think it just, I really think that we need to focus on that and be able to look at all of those processes, whether it's social media or anything, to be able to look at everything we can do to make those things better. So we do that by trying to improve our internal communications and then improving our external communications. So that's very brief as a summary to the document that we've built out. The document that will be put out to the public, we'd have a few tweaks to it to make, but it's about 60 pages, and, but I expect, I think, I feel like that document is pretty user-friendly too, that the public will be able to get a lot out of it and to see what we, what we do and where we're going and what came out of all the strategic planning process. So with that, I'm open to any questions you guys might have.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Glenn, I think you have a firefighter family member, don't you? You wanna open up?
I just had a couple of questions. So the first is your focus groups that you referenced, where, how do you recruit those? Where do you get those people? Are they main, I know in one case you're interviewing your own employees, but you said you interviewed the public using focus groups, so where do you get those people?
Well, yeah, so it's a couple of different things. One, like you said, there was the, there was the internal stakeholder review, so I used the groups within the fire department as focus groups to be able to, for one thing, to give them a voice, to let them have a say, like they're the ones out there, they're the living embodiment of the mission, so to let them have a say in what that mission is, and then to listen to them tell me how they feel about morale and public perceptions and what it's like to do the job with, when the run volume's going up, you're out there dealing with COVID and all of these things. So it was really important to, like I said, I guess if you wanna put it in those terms, to use each crew to break them down into focus groups made up of the rank and file of the fire department. As far as external feedback, once again, that started with the process of utilizing social media and taking advantage of the survey on the Survey Monkey, to be able to draw folks in with an easy-to-use survey that just takes just a couple minutes of their time to be able to let us know what they think. Now, as far as taking, like we've taken that and we've built out a group from those respondents to be able to put them into focus groups that can be virtual or they can be in-person, and I expect it's gonna be a little bit of both. So we've built out those focus groups. As far as putting this plan into action, we're getting ready to do that, and we'll choose opportune times to bring those groups in, and some folks might be involved in more than one session of that, but we're gonna bring them in when it's gonna be the, when their input is gonna be the most valuable for whichever action piece we have for that. Okay?
And then there was an article republished in the Messenger Inquirer about a month ago about virtual reality training, they're using it for the police, you know, it's less expensive, you don't have, you know, the physical setup. I don't know if that's even practical to do with preparing firefighters to do their job, but is there any kind of VR training available out there, and if so, is that something you'd look at using as part of your training modules?
It's definitely, it's definitely out there. I mean, it's almost like a video game, I guess, but, and the challenge with some of that stuff is that you're trying to simulate something that really needs to be realistic enough that you have that recognition, prime decision-making for the person who's going through the training. So I don't know if that kind of training is optimal, we're definitely willing to look at that, and we're getting ready to rebuild our training center, and if that's something where we could have some pieces that factor into that, I'm sure as far as some of it comes down to whether we're willing to invest what it costs to get that, if the police department is definitely engaging in that, I'd be more than happy to see what they're looking at and how beneficial they feel like it has been or will be. But yeah, I mean, it's on our radar, and we wanna take advantage of all the technologies that are out there to make sure that our people are ready.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Chief.
Chief, I have a couple of questions. When you had your internal stakeholders, was, were there predetermined questions or was that just open dialogue?
Well, the way it was done, first, we workshopped our mission and our vision statement and our values to determine kind of who we are and how we see ourselves as a fire department. As far as specific questions, it wasn't really a questionnaire, it was more getting into the, whenever you perform a SWAT analysis, you're really looking at a kind of, the strengths and weaknesses of your organization, so what do we see as what we're actually good at and what are, what are kind of challenges for us or things that we need to get better at as a fire department? So it's put out more broadly than having specific questions, say, hey, what are our strengths? So then you have your groups, kind of work in your groups, you build that out, have a list of strengths, a lot of them overlap between the groups because we're proud of our strengths. When you get into our weaknesses, some of those things overlap too, some things were in strengths and weaknesses, but that was all internal. So it wasn't specific questions, then you get into the external side of it, like what are the things that we can't necessarily control as much, but we need to be aware of or take advantage of, those are opportunities and threats. So it's just put out there like that, what are our strengths, what are our weaknesses, what are our opportunities and threats?
If there's a fire on a county piece of property in the city limits, do you all respond to that?
We're not dispatch, if it, it depends on how it comes in. If it comes in to dispatch as a county address, they're not automatically sending the city fire department. But with mutual aid with the county, I mean, we'll go anytime they ask us, but what happens a lot of time with cell phones and the way that people give the information, they don't give exact addresses, they don't really say 1223 or 1405 or whatever. So, see, in general, like those little, the county pockets that are in the city, a lot of times, we kind of find out after the fact that we just responded to a county.
I don't have a problem with that, I just was curious, someone asked me that.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it happened over on Veach Road half a dozen times with Tom Blue Furniture.
That's, that's one of the big areas, West Parish, and then Veach Road have these little, these little pockets, but when somebody sees smoke, they don't care whether it's city or county, and they call it in by an intersection or whatever, and we just go.
Yeah, I hate to blindside you with this, but, you know, presentation this in-depth, and we have no idea what you're gonna say when you get here, so I apologize if some of these questions are blindsiding you a little bit. How diverse is the police, of the fire department?
Diversity in terms of minorities? Well, we're pretty lily-white, to be honest. And that's, that's not by design. I value diversity in my personal life and the education that I've had, and I get that diversity is extremely important, and we have the applicants that we have, and we hire the best candidates that we have off of lists that we have.
That's what I wanted to hear you say. Okay, thank you.
Well, I will say, like on a note, as far as, if you want, like not just, like if you get into gender, as far as in terms of diversity, I will make a note on that, we have, we have two female firefighters as far as our uniform personnel, and of course, we have an administrative aide who's a female. Yeah, so it's, as far as on the street, we have two females and currently should be 95 males, counting myself.
So you talked about people leaving, you know, I think we looked at it, didn't we, city manager, the retention, would you like to, I'll let, we looked at your retention back, you know, numbers versus OPD and other places like that, city manager?
We do, man, I'm not sure if that was a specific question or just wanted me to comment, but we look at that every year as part of the budget, so if you remember, for the current budget, whenever we drafted that back in, about almost a year ago now, we look at turnover by department, and so that's how we determine where to make targeted adjustments, right, based on departments that had a certain turnover exceeding a certain percentage, for example. And so luckily, fire department actually does really well from a retention standpoint, far better than most of the city, and so we very much appreciate that continuity and retention of those employees.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just note on that, I don't wanna lose any of them, because every time they go, they take experience with them, so, I mean, I'm glad we compare favorably to the other ones, but I still wanna try to hold on to them if we can.
So we blame you if one of them leaves then?
You have to blame me for everything.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else have anything? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Project list.
Thank you, Mayor. As most months, the project lists have been available for your review, and while you're looking at that or asking us any questions for the month, I have asked Abby Shelton, Community Development Director, to come give a very brief update on the Northwest Initiative as well.
Afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, Abby Shelton, Community Development Director for the City of Owensboro. Just real quickly, gonna give you some numbers, highlight the ones that are in your packet. Out of all the programs we have within the Northwest NRSA right now, between the CDBG Home and Community Catalyst Grant programs, we have about $3 million in public and private investment so far, and that is 35% in public investment, 65% in private investment. And about a year ago, we were tasked with coming up with an identity for the Northwest area, and that mainly pertains to the areas around First and Second Street closer to the river. It's a very predominantly older portion of town that has kind of lost touch with reality and had an identity that they can call their own. So we started on a journey to find a name for those folks over a year ago now, did a Survey Monkey survey, solicited input from the citizens as far as a name they thought would be appropriate for that area, narrowed it down to about five, let me close up, five options. Those were Riverview, Dublin Village, River Run, Riverview Run, the Distillery Quarter and the Distillery District. We had about 94 answers, and the winner was Riverview. So I had our new PR and marketing person throw together a logo for us that we can use for signage down in that area, so I wanted to announce that. And the person that submitted it will receive a $100 gift card to Walmart, and that was Paul Morrissey. He is a local resident, and his explanation for submission of this name was, it is bounded by the Ohio River, it encompasses English Park, upscale residences, dots, the river, upscale residence dot the riverfront, as well as a couple of notable industries, Specialty Foods Group and Green River Distilling Company. It's a name people will connect with and remember. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you, Abby. I think we talked about that quite a bit in the State of the City, you know, because there's people, you know, that say we're not doing anything over there, and it kind of makes me mad a little bit, but, so I'm glad you were here to reinforce that we didn't get it wrong when we were talking about it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I got a question. Abby, I don't remember the last time we looked at the numbers, but hasn't the private investment increased?
It has, and I did inform city manager because I didn't snapshot a copy of what I saved in my Excel spreadsheet when I gave you guys your information for your packet, but it's substantially increased. We have several, had an announcement, obviously, of the private investment for the transitional housing, kind of transitional housing that's gonna go down on Ohio River, Ohio Street by the river, and then there's quite a few other private investments due to the Community Catalyst Grants that we have implemented in that area.
That's great. Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions about the city's project list? Bring them forward at this time, please.
I've got one question I wanna ask about city manager.
Sure.
Recently, city manager Pagan, Madisonville shut down their only, one and only movie theater, and while this sort of ties to Highway 54 tip, because that's where our movie theater is, and I love the movie theater, you know, but I know COVID has just devastated, you know, Hollywood and the movie industry. Is that something just in the future you and your staff could check on, because I'm just wondering, I mean, Madisonville no longer has a movie theater, fortunately for them, they can pop up to Henderson, what I guess our people could do, but just the impact that would have on our community if we had no movie theater, particularly as nice as the Malco is, I mean, it's a 16, it's a beautiful theater, and, you know, to Matt Hayden's credit, it's a beautiful facility, but the economy is the economy. So that was my one question, because that would also hurt the tip.
Okay, I don't know the impact of one particular offhand here, we'll do some research and follow up with you. Yeah, we'll say, just on a personal note, we went to the movies twice over the holidays with my kids, and it was packed both times, sellout for the movies that we went to.
Anybody else go to the movies? One, two, three. All right, did you go this year, Mr. Commissioner Glenn?
No, I didn't.
Did not go to the movies? All right, just checking.
I've been streaming.
Oh, so you're one of the economic disadvantages of the movie theater. I got you. I don't know how to do that streaming stuff. Anything else come for this work session tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Some move?
Some move, second.
We are adjourned.